Okay, so I called to order the Board of Assessors meeting at 9:37. And this is a public meeting being video and audio recorded for cable broadcast and internet posting on the Dayton, mass.gov and YouTube websites.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, um, old business. So, um, I was supposed to have my budget discussion. It's you all have a budget under there.
Yes, we do.
Supposed to be on that snow day, so it's pushed to next week, next Tuesday. Um, I was able to reduce that map. I got a quote for the, um, neighborhood maps. Remember the neighborhood when the DOR is going to come and they're going to want the neighborhoods? So, um, it's $1,800. It's in there. Um, I had 4,000 in there, so, um, but I'm still gonna make, see if I really need to do it. So, that's there.
What time is that budget meeting? It's Tuesday, two, something, 2:00, 2:30, I think?
It's just with the accountant and Mike. So that is what, it was higher. Um, it was preliminary. I had to get it in. Nancy signed off on it when I went over it with her.
And I marked it preliminary, I think.
Did Eric get a ton more money than the rest of us this year? Why is there so much money?
We can move on now. No, I'm just kidding.
Why is there so much money in chairman salary for actual?
Yeah, I was actually just looking at that. Is that right?
No, it should just be all 40.
To get salary, salary chairman, and then you got salary members.
Oh, it's supposed to be opposite. Um, no.
Well, can't be. Then I can even have more.
Well, I have here for 25, chairman is 4,900, and 2,900.
The fiscal year 24 looks okay, but I'm just asking why is fiscal year 24?
Well, the actual 23 looks like 98.
We paid money to Carol.
That one fiscal year 23, we did not.
Didn't we?
Why would we pay money?
No, she was gone by then. Yeah, so she wasn't getting anything then. I don't, I didn't make that. I don't think that's right. I didn't.
I mean, fiscal year 23 isn't even over.
24 was just not multiplied by two.
Well, it will be in.
Yes, yes, 23 is over.
Yeah, that's, that's right. Yeah, I don't worry. Fiscal 24. I'm not concerned about.
So we're in 24.
Yeah, but we're looking over 25.
Yeah, but I think the reason why that is high, I think we did pay money to Carol.
That would have been, yeah, that would have been probably.
Always get the years messed up, sorry.
We're only concerned with 25.
Right, okay.
25?
24.
FY25, the highlighted column.
Well, okay, gotcha. I'm sorry.
Highlighted 25. We're already in 25.
Right, okay, well, that makes sense. That number makes sense. The one in 23 didn't make sense to me. That's what you were questioning, though, right?
All right, all right.
All right, so if we're in the highlight, that makes more sense. I got you. Just have some more coffee.
I need more coffee. So, this is year 24 actual.
Okay, now we're there.
And then this is, so it's only halfway through.
Yep.
Right, okay.
So that will go up to 4, 5, 9.
I thought FY23 was last year.
It was two years ago, correct. Okay, thanks for clearing that up.
Thank you, sorry.
I'm glad you asked that question.
Okay, so, I mean.
Hold on, let me put this through. Just another 30 seconds, please.
Yep, and the paper's attached explaining why there are increases.
I'll talk about this first, but we have a budget for clerk. Do we have a clerk yet?
We have 11 applicants and tomorrow is the deadline.
Have they done any interviews yet? Or you gotta wait until all the applicants are in? Is that how that works?
I'll go right to Karen, so she, Indian House? No, not on the 11? Wow.
It's to be in the assessors office, really.
Not many that are lower than that.
I was gonna say, that salary looks really low, but that's the union contract.
That's union, yep.
Is that a full-time position?
Yeah.
Is that a what?
Full-time. 39 is what.
39, yep.
So, okay.
Professional and technical, that's all your training, like continuing med and stuff like that?
And if you wanted to train, it's there for, also for you guys, if you have things you want to go to.
Yeah, once in a while, they have those regional meetings. I've gone to a couple. Uh, like I went to Brooklyn, I went to see them as a paper breaking down. Well, no one else is on there except for us on this page right here.
Yeah, but can you describe this?
Behind it is.
Oh, it's on the side.
Let's try and save some trees. Um, so RRC went up because this is, uh, we're getting recertified this year. It's our fifth year, so they have to go to each and every uh, business that they have listed. That's how, I guess, they do it. So unfortunately, it went up 4,600. This is who we use. There's gonna be expenses every five years because they have more work to do, so.
Okay, so all of these other line items are probably part of it.
Yes. This is, this, yes. So this is what it looks like.
So this RRC number will go back down next year?
Yes. No, I'm also, um, no, it was just, I think it was just for you to know what I came up with, I think. Okay, so, right, there's no, there's no motion, right, Nancy?
There's no motion on that, no.
I don't think so, right?
Update on pilot, or is, so, oh, yeah, so old business A is, we don't vote on that. This is just informational at this point.
You know, maybe we should.
Just vote to oppose the budget.
I'll make a motion that we, um, approve the preliminary budget. And we'll discuss it again after you have your meeting with the town administrator and account.
Um, I'd like to, how's it going, friendly amendment, just to say, to add the amounts, which is 230,347,82, and 19,529.
An amendment and second.
Oh, to include, yeah.
Okay, so I'll second.
Just do it, just do it.
Okay, and then you second?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So motion made and seconded, any discussion?
What were the numbers again?
They're these right here, the totals from this page.
230, 347,82, and 19,529.
Okay, all right.
All right, motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Update on pilot agreement. Sorry, guys. Um, what happened was, um, I did get a phone call, I think it was last Friday, from Savile Chef regarding, um, pilot, we got, we got two pilot agreements that I'm trying to move along. One of them is the farm way down William Street, um, ISM Dayton 2. And, um, the other one is Arujos. In going through the paperwork that I've got and in sitting with Stephanie, there's still parts missing. And in the case of Arujos, Clearway, whatever, um, we matched the, they put together two pilot agreements that are gonna come together to be the whole, all right, because there's two property owners. One of them, the acreage doesn't match the property card. So when he called me, I said to him,
The acreage that they're mentioning in the pilot agreement does not match the pilot, the card.
Yes, right. One of them matches perfectly. If you look at the property card and you look at the draft pilot agreement, it's right on the nose. The other one, they've got 10-point something acres. We got a number that's 9.8, and we got one that's 13-point something. We don't know what they're looking at. So I said to him, take a look at the property cards again. You've got all this information you sent, deeds and all that, but this has got to match town records. So I need you to go back at that. I also need you to send me a copy of the map because attached to the back of the pilot, one of the attachments is a plot plan, okay? I said, um, before we can actually talk to the man who reviews our stuff, meaning Rich, we gotta make sure everything matches. And, and there's no way I can go to a board of selectmen or anybody else. I can't even take this to my own board because it doesn't match. So I need that. It hasn't come. Uh, in the case of the ISM Solar, which is the one way down William Street, um, I'm looking for a copy of the building permit, which I think I got. Oh, excuse me, going back to the, uh, one, the farms out of Arujos, I said to them, have you got a copy of the building permit for those two properties, or at least in total, because the number of panels that you're gonna be taxed on must match the number of panels on the building permit? And he said, I'll have to look at it. I said, send me what you have. So as of last Friday, I got no emails on either of those. So, um, when I get that information, I'll sit with Stephanie again, we'll go through it again. If I have everything to put together the draft, I'll just fill in the lines and send them out to you guys so you can look at it. Obviously, we gotta talk to Rich about, um, the 20-year tax plan, uh, total taxes, and we can come up with the, uh, breakdown of the 20 payments, so to speak. Um, but that's where we are with it, so.
So the ball's in their court, they just gotta give you some more information?
Yes, yes.
That probably made them look at it a little bit closer. Maybe they had some inaccurate information. So that's good, all right.
Well, the other thing that was kind of strange, they were emailed, um, a boilerplate agreement with blanks. All they had to do was write in the name because the attachments are the payment schedule, added inventory list, all your panels and all that good stuff, um, plot plan, the payment schedule is blank because we're filling that in. And I'm thinking, how, how do they think we're gonna enter into agreement when I don't have all of this stuff? So anyhow, I said, everything has got to match. The building permit, number of panels, got to match. Number of acres, got to match. So what I can tell you, this is, on the, uh, the property that was formerly Clearway, which is Arujos, I talked to Mike Mullin. After we talked with Rich and come up with total taxes for 20 years, I told him, we're gonna front-end load this for the first 10 years, so we'll do the, the payments. So I'll develop the consolidated payment schedule, one sheet. From that, those payments will be broken down for those two properties. And what I said to Mike Mullin was, the easiest way to do this is based on acreage. X acreage here and X acreage there, it's gonna come together. The guy understands it because they're really concerned about the main number. Because they're gonna end up paying the same amount. But anyhow, I ran that by Mike and he says, yeah, that sounds like it should work. And I said, well, he, he was acceptable, but just want you to know what I'm thinking. I said, okay, so anyhow, this will be on the agenda for the next time, assuming I get some stuff. But in the meantime, if I can get enough info, I will email those out to you. The other thing that was strange, as I said, they get a blank boilerplate, boilerplate, fill in the blanks. Don't worry about the tax thing, we'll do that. I don't know how they did it, but it all came back printed, all run together and everything else. And I said to Stephanie, I don't know what this is. There's no way I'm reading that word for word and comparing it to our boilerplate. No. So we sat down and filled in the blanks based on the basic stuff we needed.
That must have taken a while. So you had to take the information from their submission and put it on the, and put it on the?
On our form.
On your form that makes it easier for us to understand and read because it's simplified, I guess, right? I'm guessing.
It was, I showed it to Mike.
But then his, so I think, I would just suggest maybe you put that back on them, one for time's sake.
No, 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 no. When somebody sends me something.
But the other part is, it leaves, if you interpret it incorrectly and put information from their submission onto ours, and it's not correct, and they say, oh, no, no, I'm just saying, it's impossible. Oh, it's just basic, okay.
What is going on our form, we went, culled through the whole thing and read it. Because the, the basic boilerplate said 15 years. So Stephanie says, we gotta change that. I said, yep, we'll fix that. It's a 20-year agreement. And I confirmed that with them. When I send out a form and say, fill in the blanks, and it comes back and I look at it and say, what is this? What I normally do is say, okay, page one, this is what I sent. What did they fill in? Okay, it matches, all right? When I get something that's supposed to look like this, and it comes back something like this, and I do this and say, you gotta be kidding me. So that's why we took the time. So what I said to him, now, you're going to, after I have a chance to meet with, uh, my fellow assessors and get their questions answered, the next thing that will happen is, you'll get a draft of this. You review it and get back to us. If you have any questions, we'll resolve them. If there are no questions, then that is the agreement that's gonna go to the town administrator and the board of selectmen.
Okay.
All right?
I see. So that's a check and balance, that you're not just taking it, you're sending it back saying, did I interpret this correctly? And they're saying, yes, and they're saying, we're signing off on this, you did this correctly.
Right, and, and when we get through with the process of the selectmen and the town administrator, and now it's, put this on the warrant, please, they're gonna get it again.
Right.
Because what's, that's what's going to town meeting, folks. That's what's cast in stone.
Okay, the only part of the story I'm not understanding is, you said you sent them a form with blanks to fill in.
And they didn't fill it in.
What did they send back? I don't understand.
So basically, probably, so she's probably saying, here's what we put it on, please do this, and they're saying.
Titles like for one, two.
And they're saying, this is how we do it.
Non-stop, no margins, no anywhere, just.
My guess is, other towns or cities where they do this, they have, the company has a standard form that they call on and say, here's our thing.
Probably, yeah.
Nancy's gone one step further and said.
So it was a different form?
Here's a different form, probably the same information.
But she said, here, fill out our form. And they were like.
No, we'll send you what we have, an extra work on their part, so they put the extra work on our part to.
That person would have sent it back and rejected it and told me.
Well, now we're spending time on the form, we're just saying, no, put it on this form. But they didn't. You know, print, screen, boom, send it over. And they make us do it. So anyway, I think, that's fine. We get it, we can move on.
I don't have it, I didn't bring it, so.
No, that's fine. We don't need to see this. I get what you're saying, but Bill's right. I don't think we should be spending the time on that.
No, 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 no. When we get down to the nitty-gritty, I just, give me the information I need.
Right.
I will, even when you fill in the blank, I'm gonna check what you wrote in the blank, okay? So that I am comfortable saying to you guys, Stephanie and I worked on this, this is what it looks like. What do you think? Because I don't want you guys having to go through it and say, hey, this doesn't make sense. They said this and we said, no, no. I want, I want the company.
Everybody's in agreement. They're in agreement, you're in agreement, and then you submit.
The only issue I have is thinking of, if somebody sends their own form, I mean, we would literally have to read through every single word.
Well, that's what she was saying, it was a big form.
The same submission.
It was a big form. Say, push, push that work back on them.
I got to like three pages, and I'm like, I can't even.
And I don't want to spend too much time on it, we get it, I would just say that.
We called that, we got the information we need, we picked up the places where there are errors, and that's what I let them know. I'm missing this, I need that, this doesn't match. Um, simply because I've made it clear to all, anyone looking for a pilot agreement, here's the agreement. The only thing that changed would be obviously your name, address, blah, 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 number of years, payment schedule, uh, plot plan, inventory. That's what you must give us. The terms and conditions, this is it, folks.
Okay, all right. New biz.
And I would just add, this original boilerplate was approved, and I worked with Matt Costa on this, and we went back and forth and worked out the kinks. So it's been reviewed by council, and that's another reason I don't want things changed in it, because it would have to go back to council. Who wants to pay for that? Anyhow.
What you got for us this week?
All right, so there's no invoices. Okay, so we have 22 motor vehicle abatements, sorry.
We have 22 abatements?
No, we have a fiscal year 2022.
Okay, sorry.
Single item version that we signed, the motor vehicle abatement for 2022 in the amount of $234.37.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry to interrupt you. I'm looking for the special services.
Um, you have to go around the back. There downstairs is the entrance for the building, building department.
I thought we were gonna get public input.
Hey, I thought he was here for the meeting.
Come on, yay, we got somebody.
Okay, so this is a motor vehicle for 2023 abatement. Just one place to sign on this.
Motion we sign motor vehicle abatements for 2023 in the amount of $223.31.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is a warrant commitment for, um, actually, I'll give you this first. It's the same thing, but I'll take that back. This is the next one on mine. That one is for, oh, no, wait a second, I'm mine. Sorry, I didn't do that. I was so organized. Yeah, take this one instead. This is warrant commitment for a revised personal property. Usually I revise, I said it's, um, the solar. I don't know what the value is when the bills go out, so I revise to, so we'll collect what our payment is supposed to be. So they have a, say, like $60,500. So by revising the bill and sending them an additional bill, we'll receive the money that we're supposed to for the pilot.
We, we think what the problem is, the, the software program that puts tax bills together, looks at a solar farm, doesn't realize there's a separate agreement. So it does it automatically.
Give you the correct.
It gets the preliminary value.
Yeah, yeah, I get it.
So this is the difference between what the computer spit out and.
What they, what agreement says they gotta pay.
Exactly.
Motion that we sign the warrant, um, for Elm Street Solar in the amount of $32,638.66.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So there's two places to sign.
I know that by the fact that.
I went through all my little arrows.
On here. I'm gonna have to switch.
Recycle stickies.
Yes, they're not, I don't know if they're gonna make it another round. Maybe. I think last time meeting, I walked in with one of them stuck to me. Like an arrow right there.
Taking them home, are you?
I am, I am. See that? Take my work home. Okay, so the next one is, this is the final motor vehicle, vehicle commitment for 23. So it's 23-7, 07.
23 dash, so what are we on, D now? We're on D?
Yes, so it's taking, you know, maybe November, December, anyone transferring and putting new vehicles on the road, and they're getting a bill.
A motion that we sign the warrant for motor vehicle excise tax in the amount of $7,024.05.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wait a minute.
There's two on there.
This says electrical generation plant.
Yeah, that's the category. I was thinking about that myself when I saw it, too.
This.
They are electrical, they're solar.
Yeah, but, um, okay, that's what I'm looking for, ISM Solar, Dayton 3.
The motion I made was for ISM.
You didn't mention ISM, yeah. And there's more than one up there, that's why I'm thinking, wait a minute, which one are we looking at?
Should we amend that to say ISM?
Yeah, just, just add, I, um, in that motion, just add ISM Solar Dayton 3 LLC. This was the.
Agreed, seconded.
Yes, I am.
So this is the first commitment for motor vehicle, it's a biggie, for 24.
Field of residence reaping.
And what can we do?
Where to begin to try to assess this? Motor vehicle exercise, yeah, I, motion we sign the warrant in the, for motor vehicle excise taxes in the amount of
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion?
That's a lot of money.
That's a lot of mua. All those in favor?
Regrettably, I.
Okay.
Biggie, that one's always biggest.
But that's, at least that's income. What used to get me is when I would have to read the warrant because the, the payments to the regional school district were always separate warrants, and it was zillion million.
So this is real estate exemptions. Was that two people? Yep, so two applicants that have come in after the bills have gone out, so. We still have up until April to take exemptions.
Yeah, these will be ones we've already approved.
Those are, you guys don't look at those.
All the ones we, we said, as long as they're, so which one's 22E?
That is 100% veteran. Yep.
Motion that we sign the 2024 real estate exemption in the amount of $2,458.86.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor? Oh, no, I'm sorry, any discussion? All those in favor?
We like veterans, that's.
I was gonna say, well, this is a happy one.
This is a happy, it does not completely undo the pain of the previous one, though.
Right.
But that's income, okay, so that one, you guys have already approved abatements during executive session, that is just the number.
Is approved.
Yeah. So that is not re-putting the abatement.
This is the motion that we sign the twenty-twenty-four real estate abatements in the amount of twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars and eleven cents.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This one is also one that's already been approved, it's a personal property.
Yep.
Uh, motion that we, uh, sign the twenty-twenty-four personal property abatement in the amount of one hundred and ninety-four dollars, fifty cents.
Oh, excuse me, second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, guys have already approved, cause once an abatement is approved.
It's the CPA side.
There's CPA, water, electric, whatever is part of that, if, if. Well, you're gonna have a water.
Water, electric.
And electric.
All these are the same.
Yeah, they're all.
Motion we sign the, uh, CPA abatement in the amount of two hundred and thirty-seven dollars, ninety cents.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor? Or any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
And that we sign the twenty-twenty-four water district abatement in the amount of fifty-seven dollars and seven, seventy-six cents.
Second.
Seventy-six.
Did you make the motion already? I'm sorry, I just totally missed that, I was, so, motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, sorry. I was, I was, I was reading this over here, I knew you were going, I'm going, wait a second, I just missed something.
Same, same, motion we sign the twenty-twenty-four real estate, uh, electric district in the amount of eighteen dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. If Carrie was watching, she'd be like, welcome to my world, guys.
Like it.
That's all she got.
That's all I got.
She got, well, our only public input was directions.
Yep, so we're good there.
We're good there, any correspondence?
I don't think so.
Okay. Any review of minutes?
No time.
No minutes?
No minutes.
Um, no meanings, okay. Anything unanticipated come up?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Mister Chairman, I move that we move to executive session under general law, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one, A seven, to comply or act under the authority of any special law or federal grant and aid requirements to review, discuss, and act of this year, twenty-twenty-four, abatement applications.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We shall not be returning to. Thank you, everybody.
That it, of the signatures?